Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting for the San Gabriel City Council. I called this special meeting to order at 5:35. Clerk, please call the roll.
Mayor Minjaka?
Here.
Vice Mayor Liang?
Here.
Councilmember?
Here.
Councilmember Harrington?
Here.
Councilmember Pu?
Here.
Okay, we will start with some announcements from our chief city clerk.
Tonight's meeting is live streamed on cable channel three and our online platform. Please email all public comments to cityclerk@sgch.org. No later than the time the item is considered by the council tonight. Comments will be read for up to three minutes each. Comments received after the end of the public comment section will be forwarded to the city council after the meeting. If you wish to be added to the distribution list to receive city council agendas, please email your request to cityclerk@sgch.org.
Okay, please proceed with public comment.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Pursuant to provisions of government code section 54957, this is the time provided for members of the public to address the city council. And Madam Mayor, we have not received any general public comment.
Okay, thank you. Next item, please.
New business item A, Animal Care and Control Services Agreement. Presentation will be made by Assistant City Manager and Community Development Director Arminia Shapiro.
Good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the city council. The item before you tonight for consideration is the Animal Care and Control Services contract. As we spent quite a bit of time at the June 16th meeting discussing the current circumstances, the increase that's being posed, we were able to walk you through that on June 16th. And the direction we received was to update the draft agreement to six months with an option to extend for another six months at a cost of $175,000. After our council meeting, staff reached out to the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society and discussed the proposed new terms. Last week, we received correspondence from Cindy Rigney, President of the Board of the Directors for the San Gabriel Humane Society. The board was willing to entertain the six-month agreement, but only under the condition that they be allowed to retain their revenue received from dog licensing, which averages approximately $40,000 a year. Given that this was not a part of the discussion during the June 16th council meeting, the offer needs to be considered by the city council this evening and direction provided to staff on whether or not to accept the six months' offer or to go with the original contract with the revenue loss. Tonight, there are two agreements for consideration. The original one-year agreement, which was presented at the last council meeting, and the revised six-month agreement showing the humane society retaining the licensing fees. And as I mentioned, that averages to about $40,000 a year. I did want to point out that since the posting of this agenda, the city manager and I did have a follow-up conversation last night with Cindy Rigney, Board President, to see if the board would reconsider retaining the licensing fee. We received communication this morning that the board will accept the contract with the modification that they are allowed to retain licensing fees. The recommendation that staff is providing for council this evening is actually for you to consider the two agreements and provide us with the direction on which agreement to enter. And at this time, Mark and I are both available to answer any specific questions you may have related to the agreements in front of you. Thank you.
Mayor, can I make, this is Mark Lazaretto, City Manager. Can I make a couple of quick comments just to add on to what Armin said?
Absolutely.
Thank you very much. I wanted to add that I apologize that we're in this position on the 30th of January of June, excuse me, trying to consider a contract that runs out tomorrow and it seems like there aren't any good options here. And by saying there aren't any good options, I don't mean that staying with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society isn't a good option because of the humane society. I mean that we have input from council and several community members about the costs that other cities pay for their services and us trying to scramble at the last minute to make sure that our community is getting the best value and the best facility. So when Armin said that our recommendation is to choose one of those two options and provide direction, that's our recommendation. If I had a request, it would be after we talk about this further to enter into the six-month contract, even though it won't be saving the city any money. Because I think any other option other than having a contract would require staff to scramble around and at the last minute, and we won't be able to provide services for a couple of months to the community on animal control services. We've talked to at least six cities over the past week and a half to try and see how they have done their services, and it seems like there are lots of options out there, especially options that would be collaborative with cities around us. But in trying to turn one of those options on overnight, there isn't really a good option to do that. So I know that puts council into sort of a bind of trying to make a decision at the last minute, and our budget is tighter than it's ever been. So I know that that's not an option that council wants to have to consider at the last minute. But in talking with Rosemead as an example, who do their services in-house, they went without services for a period of three months while they tried to scramble around and hire staff or use existing staff and retrain them, and then a secure sheltering. So we're looking at all options, including bringing this in-house, including going with the county and going with Pasadena Humane Society or in forming a JPA with several cities in the area. We have a call next week with the County of Los Angeles to talk about a county model, and it's with several cities and how the cities can all get together to try and bring costs down. And ultimately, we might find that San Gabriel Humane Society is the best long-term option. But the only way to find that out is to explore all of our other options and make sure that we are getting the best price. And the last thing I'll say is that it's also clear that one of the driving factors in our costs being higher than many of our cities that surround us are because we have an inordinate number of animals that get impounded at our shelter based on our per capita. And when I've talked to cities that have quotes from LA County, it's because their prices are much lower because their number of animals are lower. And the county model is based 100% on, not 100%, excuse me, but the vast majority of the costs are based on the impounding costs of about $400 an animal that's impounded. And so when you look at our 900 animals plus or minus a year that get surrendered or picked up in San Gabriel, that's the driving factor for our costs. And in trying to figure out the best solution for the city of San Gabriel, in talking to Ms. Rigney, we had some great conversations about ways that we could possibly reduce the number of cats in the community by spending a little money on cat neutering and spaying programs and working with our community. We could save, you know, $100,000 or more by reducing the number of cats that are surrendered in our community. Those options have never been explored, and those are the ways that we could control our contract even with our current provider. So all of that to say, I do stand ready, and Armin stands ready to answer questions. We have worked with city managers and community development directors in several cities around us, and we are unfortunately more versed in this than we would have liked to have been, given the circumstances. But we are willing and able to do whatever the council wants tonight, and we'll carry it out to the best of our abilities. But again, I don't appreciate putting you all in the position that you're in tonight to have to make a decision at the last minute. That's never our intention as staff. So with that, Armin and I both stand ready to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mark. So at this time, we'll have clarifying questions for city council, the staff, before we begin with the public comment and with deliberations and discussion. So let's start with Councilmember Pu. Any clarifying questions?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think the number of 900 animals sheltered per year, can you break that down for me a little bit further? In terms of like, how many are these dogs versus cats? Is there an average amount of time that each one needs to be sheltered? Things along that nature? Because when I recall from some of the information provided by the humane society in terms of just service calls, it was about, you know, kind of averaged around 1,000 per year over the last five years. But not all of those calls, we couldn't really confirm that all of those calls were actually for lost or stray animals. So I just wanted to understand where this 900 number comes from and also whether or not there's any further detail or information about the composition of that volume.
I'd be happy to provide counsel with that information. Thank you, Councilman Pu. So the numbers for 2019, for the calendar year, 290 dogs, 290 dogs, and 510 cats. And then 109 others, so that would be any mixed animals, rabbits and other things, for the total of 909. The biggest increase over the years has been in those cats. So over the past five years, we've averaged anywhere from a low of 250 dogs to a high of 334 dogs. So somewhere in that range of 250 to 330. For cats, it's gone up from a low of 381 to a high of 510. So over that time period, approximately a 30% increase in the number of cats. We get, the way the county does their pricing, there's a flat five-day impound fee that they charge of $449 per impound. So that's where that cost comes from. When I say that's the county cost, that's how the humane society, the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, has backed into what their fee that they pay us. They have used that as a way to sort of justify their numbers. But the reason I bring that up is it's an important distinction. One of the things that our conversation, we had a great conversation with Ms. Rigney, but one of the concerns I have about their model is that in this last time period with coronavirus, requests from the county and from others has been to not surrender those animals and to foster them on your own. And I apologize for the long-winded response, but I'm going to get to the point here. The problem or the concern that I have is our calls for service, or I'm sorry, our impounds are going to be much lower for this next fiscal year. And if we were to get charged based on that with the county, our fees would be lower. But because the humane society only has two clients, her model is not sustainable if she were to reduce our fees. So it's not really benchmarked to anything other than that was the way that she was able to back into those fees, so to speak. But all of that to say, I don't know that without without looking at other models, that we would save money by reducing the number of animals. That's one of the conversations that I would like to have time to explore. But the short answer to your short question is 900 animals and 510 dogs and, I'm sorry, cats and 290 dogs.
Okay, thanks for that information. So with, under the county contract, is it on a per-impound basis?
There's a, yes, the large, the lion's share is on a per-impound basis. There is a per-capita fee that works out to be about $33,000 for, it's less than a dollar per resident, so that's a small portion of it. And then there's a cost for every call for service. And you mentioned the 1,200 calls for service. At the county model, that would be about $107 a call. So that works out to about $120,000 for that if it were with the county, if we were getting charged per that call. The county quoted us $43,000 for that portion of it. They feel like their calls would be a lot less.
Okay, thanks for that information. I don't think I have any further questions at this time, although it does seem that the increase has been for cats, that maybe some kind of campaign, community campaign to sort of just educate, you know, our residents about the need to sort of, I don't know, monitor their cats? Or, I actually, you know, I'm not a cat owner myself, so I don't know what the sort of appropriate appropriate message would be. But it seems like that that's where the sort of largest increases in terms of the need for impounds and calls for service. So thanks for the work on, the extra work in identifying some alternatives, because I think we definitely, you know, we definitely need some.
And just to give council an idea on how to reduce the number of cats, there are trap and then spay and release programs. And that is how it takes time and it costs money, but eventually you can reduce the feral wildcat population and then eventually reduce those numbers. So it might help to spend a little money now, save money later on. And that's one of the options that we will bring back to council.
Okay, we'll move on. Councilmember Dean? Any clarifying questions before we deliberate?
Okay, so I don't know, this is clarified question. For the, like, animal control, like, based on the last time, this time, I still a little bit confusing regarding the, our city is mandatory, have the, like, animal control, the code? Enforcement, it's with our city, have to mandatory do it?
Thank you, Councilman Dean. This is Mark Lazaretto again. The city attorney and I had a little miscommunication on that. I asked one question and he answered a different question. And so we ended up giving correct information at the meeting. The question I had asked was whether we had to provide animal control services as a city, whether law requires us to do that. And the answer is yes, there are codes in our government code that require us to provide those services. What the city attorney's office heard me ask was, do we have to contract for that service? And their answer was no, we don't have to contract for that service. So it sounded like the answer was, no, we don't have to provide those services. But what they were really saying was that we can do that in-house, we can do that with a contract with the county, we can do that with a JPA, the collaboration. There's no, there's no law that states how we have to provide those services. It's just that we have to provide those services. And Mr. City Attorney, feel free to jump in if I misstated our conversation or understanding.
No, you said it exactly right.
Okay, so to clarify, we have to have this, the follow this code for the animal control? Okay, if we, no matter we do it by ourselves or contract somewhere else. Then my second question is, if we contract with the humane society, so they do the everything, it's matched this animal control code? Everything is to follow their code or not?
Yes, it is consistent with the code if we contract with animal control, with the humane society.
Okay. All right, okay, yeah, that's the, that's my question, yeah.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lau?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just have a quick question regarding the cats' population. A couple of years ago, I noticed that, you know, the cats is really growing. But I was there a month ago, and the cat's room is empty. There's no cats, and there's only one rabbit. So my question is, where did all these cats go? Because according to the number is 510, but at the, yeah, at the facility, I don't see any big numbers of cats. That's my question, maybe because the COVID-19, there is a lot of people adopt cats. So that's my question.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Liang. You answered your own question perfectly. With coronavirus, two things have happened. One, the county has requested that, and all of the shelters have requested that people foster animals and not bring them in to surrender them. So they're asking folks to keep dogs and cats at their houses and take care of those animals. And two, part of the phenomenon of coronavirus is that more people have taken on pets. When people have been home and have been home for several days at a time, they have gone and adopted pets where before there haven't been. So it's almost universal that all of the shelters in the area are at their lowest levels in years for the number of animals that are in their facilities.
So the question is, why do costs, you know, go up so high if there's no animals at the shelter? And, you know, why we have to pay double than normal?
And the reason for that is because the humane society charges us next year for this year's costs, meaning that they charge us in arrears. So with the end of the year, they figure out how many animals that they sheltered and impounded and the number of calls for service, and they base their fees upon that. And so carrying that forward, we've already confirmed with Ms. Rigney that we would have a lower cost next year if she were following that same model. The concern is, is with only two cities involved and with a drop in revenue, that she's going to find it very difficult to operate with reduced revenue. So I think our costs will be the same, even though our numbers will have gone down. That's with the humane society. Now, with reduced numbers, if we went to the counting, it would be lower. If we went with the Pasadena Humane Society, it would be lower than what they would charge us if we went there today. I don't know if it would be lower than what the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society is charging us now, but the county model, you get paid for the services that you use. So it will go up and down as those services go up and down.
All right, thank you.
And they did give us their estimates based on what we had as far as the number of animals and the services we were receiving. So when we solicited estimates from the county and from Pasadena Humane, those estimates were based on where we ended our last year with humane society. So Mark's absolutely right, there may be a difference.
Thank you.
Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to clarify, Mark, you said you're suggesting we go with the six-month contract?
I am. I would love to say go with the year because I find it hard for a city to do anything in six months. And I feel like there's a chance that six months, we could be asking you to extend that. But we will do our best to do everything we can to bring all the options to you within that six-month period. The concern is, if we do that, then we would have forgotten the $40,000 in lease revenue, I'm sorry, in licensing revenue, when we could have just done it for a year. But yes, I feel like if we work together, we can save that $40,000 in the second half by going with a different model or by working with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society to reduce our costs by trying to bring on other cities and working with Cindy. So yes, the short answer to your very short question is that would be my suggestion is to go with the six-month?
So we're going to lose $40,000 in revenue. So in effect, we would have to, the solution in six months would have to be less than $130,000, correct? If my math is okay?
Yes.
So what are you basing the number on that we could be that much less? Because the county's not that, the humane society's not that. I'm just trying to figure out how we could save that much money in six months.
Well, one of the options that's been bandied around is taking it in-house and doing it on sort of a minimal approach and working with local service providers. I can't promise to the council that we'll be able to make that happen and that we'll end up saving that money. But I know that the county, council was very hesitant at our last meeting to want to enter into a long-term contract with, uh, Humane Society. But the other option that would save us money would be doing a similar to a Rosemeat model, which is, would be to hire some part-time staff to do the animal control ourselves and then to work with, uh, veterinarians and other shelters to try and use shelter space and then to work on reducing the number of animals that we have in the, in the community. That wouldn't be the, 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 the ideal option, because I'm, you know, trying to take less in-house service than more uh, in, in some areas, but that would be the way to save money. That's the, the, it seems like right now, that would be the, the way to save money.
So when you say in-house, do you mean San Gabriel employees or do you mean contracting it?
Uh, we would look at both models, but the way Rosemeat did it was with Rosemeat employees.
Do you have their salary schedule available?
Uh, I don't, uh, not in front of me, but they, uh, they would be, uh, basically part-time, um, uh, code enforcement officers.
So what's our rate on that?
It will be, uh, I, well, one second, I can get that for you. Not to, not to guess at, uh, the, the, uh, next question you're gonna ask, but it will definitely be higher than what Ms. Rigney, uh, pays her staff.
Will be the same level of service, like, same, because I know we have a certain number of hours during the week and on the weekends that they're supposed to be doing animal control. So it will be the same service level to the community, or are we just paying less and getting less?
Uh, without really, uh, researching what, uh, Rosemeat does versus what the Humane Society does, it would only be a guess. Uh, so I, I don't know at this time. We would bring all of that information back to the council when we looked at that often.
Okay, because I'll save the salary part of it for the council discussion, because I've actually looked into these. I kind of know the answers already, that's why I'm asking those questions. Um, like a good attorney, you don't ask the question unless you already know the answer. Um, I've checked the county rates, I've checked City of LA rates, I've checked about twenty other cities' rates. And I can tell you, if they're city employees, there's no way we can match it, so that's just a little prelude.
And our, I've got the answer, our, um, ours would be about twenty-four dollars an hour.
And I'm assuming there's no benefits on top of that and no nothing, right?
No, those would be part-time, uh, those would be part-time employees, or at least that's the model that Rosemeat uses.
And how long would you see, like, just the six months, we'd ha- hire people part-time for six months? Or do you want to do that, something you look at? Because I don't know how long we could have part-time employees being a city.
Well, I'll tell you that Rosemeat doesn't see it as a long-term solution. They have their service providers are, one of them is going out of business and they're concerned about that. And so they're looking at the same discussion that all of the other cities in the area. And, and by all, I, I should, so that people listening understand, that's, um, Arcadia, uh, Rosemeat, Sierra Madre, San Marino, San Gabriel, Temple City, uh, Alhambra, um, La Cañada and Pasadena are all, um, on calls, uh, uh, on a frequent basis, trying to figure out how to deal with long-term animal control services as of the last two weeks.
Yeah, because the reason is, when I look at the actual quote from the county, that these calls for service is not really a huge part of that, it's the sheltering that's, that's in the impound, that's the money. That's the bulk of what the cost is. And so, you know, going to control services, to me, isn't, you're, you're, you're being penny wise and pound stupid, honestly. I mean, when you, when you think about it, we aren't going to get a, we're not going to save anything on the housing and the sheltering. We're only saving a little bit on the, on ten percent of the cost or eight percent of the cost, whatever it is. So, yeah, we can show a, a reduction in labor, but the big portion of our cost is that, is the impound. That's, that's the, that's the lion's share of this. And that's, that goes to the county, that goes to, as to Pasadena Humane as well. The actual services of the removal of animals and the picking up of animals, that's, this, it's, I think the county's was forty, forty-three thousand, and that's based on a lot less calls for service than we actually have. So that's kind of why I'm saying, like, yeah, that sounds great, but where are we going to shelter under that model? Are we still seeing the Humane Society, are we gonna go to Pasadena, are we going to the county? I mean, do we have, we thought that out?
That's what the six months would buy us time to, to figure out, to do, uh, uh, a similar model to what Rosemeat did or to determine that this is the best cost and this is the best model and that we recommend that we, we go forward with it. But just to give you an example, I think you're, you're right in that it's all down to the sheltering. The city of Alhambra's cost with the county, they use the county and, and just for, for the council's, um, uh, understanding, they are a hundred percent happy with the county. The only concern they have with the county is the inconvenience of their residents having to go down to Downey to pick up an animal when the animal is impounded. And that, uh, is a trade-off for the high cost of going with Pasadena Humane Society, which happens to be the highest of the three. But to, uh, to the point, uh, Councilman Harrington, Alhambra's costs with the county are going to be about two hundred and, uh, and ten thousand dollars next year, just over two hundred thousand dollars. And that's an increase from their current cost of about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars. So if you follow that through, our quote from the county, which is based on our high number of animals, is four hundred and forty-two thousand. And, uh, that includes, uh, Alhambra's higher population for their cost per population. So to your point, the lion's share of the county, um, cost is sheltering.
Yeah, and, and I would actually add to that, y- y- you mentioned it kind of in passing, that it's inconvenient to the residents to drive to Downey. I don't know if you've ever driven to Downey on a Friday night or Friday afternoon when your dog got lost. It's not fun, it's not an easy drive. So the cost to the residents is, is a hidden cost, it's like a tax that anybody who goes to pick up a dog or a cat is driving to Downey, round trip through traffic, and there's no, there's no time of day where there is no traffic. So I would ask the San, the Alhambra residents whether they're happy driving to Downey as opposed to Pasadena or San Gabriel, and they might want to rethink that, because yes, once again, you're being penny wise with the city's money, but then everyone else is paying huge opportunity cost to go pick their animal up. So that's kind of, to me, yeah, we could do that, but it doesn't make sense once again. So that's, that's the clarifying questions, I'll save the rest of it for the actual council comment, so thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Um, Mark or Arminé, uh, how many years has Rosemeat had their model?
About a year and a half.
Okay. But they have been doing licensing longer than that, so they're in, they've been doing the licensing portion in-house for several years now. That's not something new for them. Okay, yeah, because I thought they had said three years when I spoke with someone. So it's, it's relatively new to their model. And the sheltering, d- do they use, I thought you had said in the beginning that the shelter part is done by a local vet?
Yes, they have two or three local vets that they partner with, that they will take the animal to when they first impound the animal or it's surrendered. And they'll take it to the vet for basic, um, care services and boarding for a, a couple of days. And then they have a facility in La Puente, I believe, that's like an animal rescue facility that then does the long-term kenneling and the adoption services. So, uh, once it's cleared and, and has a checkup and any issues are taken care of, then it's taken to the other facility.
Okay, so it's not necessarily Downey, that's only if we, I, I didn't even think we had an option with LA County to do a la carte kind of program, it was all or nothing, or can, can you actually parcel it out?
You can parcel it out and, and, um, we have prices from the county to do parceled out service, but, um, um, they recommend not because of the confusion, uh, to the residents of having different service providers for different parts. I'll tell you on the Downey, uh, issue, that is why, um, Alhambra's in the conversation with other cities is to try and find a more local solution. And that's why cities like, um, Sierra Madre and others have not gone with the counties, because they don't want to have their residents have to go to Downey or Baldwin Park. Uh, the county has another facility in Baldwin Park, but it doesn't have as much capacity as Downey. So the county model, um, all the cities are working to try and work with Catherine Barker's office to build a facility in, uh, Altadena or one of the local cities to try and have a, a local, um, facility. It won't be as local as San Gabriel Humane, I can, you know, obviously guarantee that, but it will be closer than Downey to those cities.
And with this, um, possible new shelter, it would still be LA County? Or would it be, wha- what's the model here? What kind of? Yeah, what's the model, everyone pitches in and helps, they'll have proper oversight, all the municipalities? I mean, what, what's the model?
Uh, they're looking at all of the above, they're looking at either trying to go to the county, to a service provider, but work with the county to create a shelter, um, in the area. And the county currently uses, um, Pasadena Humane Society for overflow, they're at capacity in Baldwin Park. And we're using Pasadena, they have since stopped doing that as of last week, but up until last week, we're using Pasadena Humane Society. So one model that all the cities are looking at is working together to create a shelter or to have some sort of a long-term contract, so the county could afford to build a shelter somewhere in the area or a JPA that all of the cities would get together and have that oversight and actually have a board that would run it or, um, similar models with Pasadena Humane Society. All options are on the table right now.
Okay, thank you. Okay, well, now I'll make the announcement that the time for public con- comment on this item is closed. Chief City Clerk, please read any comments received.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I wanted to note for this first comment, it references photos and those have been sent to the city council. The first comment is from Charmaine Licardi and reads as follows. I am a San Gabriel resident and homeowner, do not mess with our local Humane Shelter. Why in the world would our city council subcontract services out to either one Pasadena Humane or two LA County when both contracted services, quote, they provided are more than what we pay our own shelter now? That's crazy, aren't we in a budget crisis? Kickback, anyone? Does someone want our shelter to close down and are now slowly trying to whittle away at it so developers can build high-rise condos on that prime land? Or did someone just not research exactly what this shelter means to the community? For those of you unaware or having ulterior motives, both Pasadena and LA County are high-kill shelters. Our shelter here is a low-kill shelter. Many animals picked up in our city wouldn't have a chance to get adopted in a high-kill shelter. Look at the before and after pictures here of a little dog found in an empty lot on San Gabriel Boulevard back in December twenty eighteen. She was starving, almost bald and covered with a yeast infection. After two months of treatment and a lot of love from our shelter, I adopted my little Sebby. If services had been subbed out to LA County or even Pasadena, two months of treatment would not have been available to help her. She would have been euthanized, get it? Our shelter must remain autonomous, leave it alone, we are watching. The next comment is from Linda Parmenter and reads as follows. We must maintain our contract in support of the San Gabriel Humane Society. It is local and easily accessible for San Gabriel residents. We can help with their costs by supporting fundraisers for it. The next comment is from Gloria Thorinson and reads as follows. I'm forwarding you a letter in support of the renewal of the contract with SGBHS. There is simply no question that they are the best choice for this city. How could anyone support choosing a country service when at least the nearest location is in Downey and a high-kill shelter? There is overwhelming support in our city for the SGBHS. I am listing reasons for the support for the renewal of the contract for a year with SGBHS. There's a meeting tomorrow regarding renewing the city contract with the SGBHS. Their contract is up tomorrow. As of July first, the city will have no services. I can't even imagine why there is any discussion about not renewing this contract. They have done an outstanding job with their services for many years. They're a nonprofit and their contract doesn't even cover all the costs of their services. It will be about twelve thousand dollars short and will rely on donations to cover the additional costs. What is the council thinking? Please read the other options. SGBHS, the least expensive, can only renew up to six months or maybe a year, because they do not know what their costs will be. Least expensive director Cindy, no salary, a volunteer. The board of directors, all volunteers. The contract with the city doesn't even cover all their costs. They will rely on donations to make up the additional twelve thousand dollars. Been in the city for as many years as I can remember, founded almost a hundred years ago, nonprofit. Since they are in the city, you can locate your pets quickly and they respond quickly. Best service and local. Pasadena Humane, two hundred twenty thousand dollars more than SGBHS. Will not accept the city of San Gabriel at this time. County of LA, ninety thousand dollars more than SGBHS. Nearest location is Downey. If you want to find your pet, you will need to go to Downey to locate your pet, high-kill shelter. The next comment is from King Myung Gar. Hello, I'm a resident of Incorporated San Gabriel at six four oh three North Willard Avenue. I value the services from SGB Humane Society. Please vote yes to retain their services. The next comment is from Stephanie Burns of six eleven De Salle Street. Please ca- keep the Humane Society open and functioning. Every city needs a shelter. Animals are lost all the time and need a safe place to be housed until their owners can come for them, thank you. The next is from Sharon Sakai. Dear sir, please save our animal shelter. Our animals need protection and care, just like the people in our city. We have gotten all our canines from the SGBHS. We have four furballs from the shelter so far. The people that work at the shelter are the most caring and professional people. Every city needs their own animal shelter. Please think twice before taking our animal shelter away. The next comment is from Talis Wong and Thomas Wong and reads as follows. Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council, I was listening to the June sixth, twenty twenty city council meeting on the presentation of the new contract by San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. Those three hundred fifty thousand dollars seems expensive, but expensive is relative. The city had received two different proposals from Pasadena Humane Society for five hundred seventy-five thousand dollars and Los Angeles County for four hundred forty-two thousand dollars, thirty days prior to the city council meeting of June sixteenth. So relatively, SGBHS proposal is cheap when our city is getting full service, meaning sheltering, field service, licensing, cremation and other general services, and our city is getting forty thousand dollars a year in licensing fees. SGBHS is in our city, enabling them to respond quickly to our residents' needs. SGBHS has high adoption ra- ratio and thus a no kill center. All of us who have used their service are very satisfied and we, the residents, are the ultimate consumers and payers. Mayor, Vice Mayor and City Council members, we don't see any reason you should reject signing the one-year contract unless there are some o- other ulterior motives. We then urge the city council to reject the six-months proposal and instead adopt the proposal presented by G, SGBHS on June sixteen, twenty twenty, for one year of service with extension for another year at a two percent increase. The next comment is from Mike Fossett. I am a San Gabriel resident and voter, do not contract out services for our San Gabriel Valley Humane Shelter for the next fiscal year. Doing so would be more expensive for our city and these changes make no sense. Our local shelter is a vital part of this community and needs to remain intact. Remember, the residents here value this shelter and are closely watching how you vote. The next comment is from Karen McCarley. Hello, I understand San Gabriel City will be voting today to renew its contract with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. Like many others, we adopted our Rocky, terrier mix, from them nine years ago. As you know, they are a no-kill shelter. Rocky was there for six months before we adopted him. I have had several dogs and he is the best dog ever. Not only do they save animal lives, they have provided many best friends for citizens of San Gabriel. Additionally, they provide education for many kids and organizations in the area. They are a great partner for our neighborhood. Please vote to renew their contract, thank you very much. The next comment is from Kathy Bremer. And it reads as follows. Please renew San Gabriel Valley Humane Society's contract for another year. They have cared for, rehabilitated, addressed medical issues and helped thousands of lost, abused and homeless animals over ninety-five years find new homes as well as reunited many of them with their owners. The San Gabriel community has depended on them and benefited from their services and care, knowing there is a caring and reliable shelter in their city, taking care of the animals when they are in need. Animal lives- Animal lives matter too. Don't put their lives at the bottom of the barrel. In our current world, they are regarded as family members in the majority of households everywhere, including San Gabriel. Please don't unearth all of the hard work, love, dedication, and progress this shelter and its devoted staff and volunteers have made by making the decision to follow the Rosemead format. This will put their lives in an uncaring environment and in grave danger. Many will end up euthanized or dumped in overpopulated, larger, county-run shelters who have a high-kill record. The majority of these animals are scared, hungry, and sometimes physically hurt when they are rescued from the street. They don't deserve to be dumped and placed in a worse environment and circumstances. And the citizens of San Gabriel don't deserve that either. By following the Rosemead model, it will show you don't care about the animals and what happens to them. It will also show you don't care for your citizens. The animals won't have a chance. They need loving care, a shelter that will give them a chance to heal and rehabilitate, a shelter who cares and will give them a better chance for a better life, a shelter who has been that very stable heart center for the animals in San Gabriel and has proven to be a great reliable service for the San Gabriel community for over 95 years. Please, 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 give San Gabriel Valley Humane Society another year contract." The next comment is from Rachel Conger. And it reads, "This message is to implore the city of San Gabriel to re-sign their contract with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. They are a 95-year fixture in the heart of San Gabriel with an amazing track record of finding animals new homes and reuniting lost pets with their owners. There have been countless animals, including cats, dogs, rabbits, turtles, goats, pigs, and roosters, that have been given new leases on life thanks to this organization. Countless community groups, including girl and boy scouts and school classes, have come there to be educated about animal care. The staff there truly care about all the animals in their care and go above and beyond to help them. Any other alternative is a certain death sentence for the animals. Animals should be able to go to the shelter within the community in which they were found. Many people in the city of Rosemead have no idea now where their animals go or that the rescue they do go to euthanizes healthy animals because they are over their allotted amount. Choosing this type of model would surely send the message to the citizens of the city of San Gabriel that the city council does not care about its defenseless pet population. Choosing another high-kill shelter like the county shelters would also mean certain death for many. SGVHS is a gem within the city of San Gabriel. None of the board members are paid for their time and neither are the many volunteers who put their heart and soul into the shelter. I implore the city council not to lose their own hearts and souls and to sign an agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. Show your community that you truly do care about the animals that mean the most to them." The next comment is from Mary Valenzuela and reads as follows. "Good evening, Mayor Manchaca and City Council members. On June 16, 2020, I was an avid listener to the San Gabriel City Council meeting. One of the agenda items presented was for funding a $350,000 contract for the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. This contract was presented and then discussed among the city council, which then questioned Signe Rigney, San Gabriel Valley Humane Society Board President. After listening to City Council Member Jason Poo state, money saved here can be reallocated to other services, such as social services or other things going forward. It is my opinion that saving animals in the city of San Gabriel is a social service, which is dedicated to servicing animals within our city along with bringing a peace of mind to each of your constituents that have pets. Provides a local safe, in-house animal control service for homeless, abandoned, feral, and deceased domestic and wild animals. What was most alarming in this meeting was when City Council Member Jason Poo verbally attacked Cindy Rigney by calling her 'good faith, factual statement' as a condescending and inappropriate comment was in itself a condescending and inappropriate comment by City Council Member Jason Poo. To add insult to injury, Mayor Denise Manchaca's support for City Council Member Jason Poo's verbal, condescending, and inappropriate attack on Signe Rigney was unprofessional, unfairly political in nature. In my opinion, Mayor Denise Manchaca's attempt to bully her way onto the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society Board of Directors is a very concerning and troublesome conflict of interest. And finally, the most disheartening comments made were when Mayor Denise Manchaca bullied City Council Member John Harrington by verbally cutting him off because of his disagreeing with the other city council members. The city of San Gabriel has a motto, which is on the website, that states, 'Be kind, practice kindness.' After listening to this meeting, I am appalled, specifically by Mayor Denise Manchaca and City Council Member Jason Poo's behavior. In closing, you are elected officials that I would expect to properly represent the whole city of San Gabriel with proper conduct, professionalism, and behavior becoming your elected role." The next comment is from Helen and it reads, "I support in keeping SGVHS." The next comment is from Elia Bagiri and reads as follows. "Please renew their contract, they're awesome." The next comment is from Sean Chirachi and reads as follows. "Hi, I am emailing to let you know I am a San Gabriel resident and would like the city to keep working with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. It has had a positive impact on our community for the past 30 years. What we gain in adoption and public safety is incalculable compared to quantifying costs and expense. Indeed, I am worried about owners not vaccinating their dogs. Please consider these thoughts and approve the SGVHS contract." The next comment is from Lorelei Hernandez and reads, "Hi, SGVHS is an excellent shelter and their services are for the community. We need them here in our city as PHS is also having problems with their contract. Please renew our contract with them. It is a nonprofit organization and it deserves a place in our community." The next comment is from Teck and reads, "Dear Sally, I am a resident of San Gabriel since 2012 and am a pet owner. SGVHS is important to me because it is the closest location pet owners can find their lost pets. It also provided low-cost vaccine to my dog each year. It would discourage residents to bring stray pets to Humane Society if it is too far from them. Therefore, I strongly support SGVHS and please renew the contract with them. Thank you." The next comment is from Mary Ellen Robson and reads as follows. "Hi, I've recently moved back to San Gabriel and was glad to find the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society is still providing valuable services to the community through pet adoption and holding lost animals for owners to claim. They even take recycling, like newspapers, that I hated to throw in the trash. Most of the cats our family adopted came from the SGVHS. I was distressed to hear that the city of San Gabriel is thinking about discontinuing the contract for SGVHS. I hope city leaders will reconsider the idea of doing away with a long-established, well-run local humane society. When I lived in Ogden, Utah, the local shelter closed and lost pets and animals available for adoption were redirected to the Davis County Animal Shelter, which was about 15 miles south of the former location off of a busy state highway. The county shelter was out of the way and difficult to find. Usage and adoption dropped. People were less likely to drive well out of their way to adopt or surrender pets. And I know of one instance of a cat owner simply abandoning the pet rather than driving to a shelter farther away to surrender it. Some people won't go the extra mile or miles to do the right thing. I would hate to see SGVHS suffer a similar fate. I would hate for residents of San Gabriel to have fewer options to adopt pets, find a lost pet locally, or to lose a no-kill shelter providing valuable services to the community. Pasadena's Humane Society has some of the same hassle factors that make it a less attractive option. Not a lot of parking on-site or nearby, larger bureaucracy to negotiate when adopting, et cetera. And I understand LA County's facilities are even farther away. What impact will that have on animals and the humans who care about them? Please continue negotiations to have a contract with SGVHS going forward. San Gabriel is a better community for having these services provided locally." The next comment is from Gail Nam and reads as follows. "To whom it may concern, as an over-50-year resident of San Gabriel, I urge you to sign a contract with SGVHS. They provide a needed service for our city. Thanking you in advance for your consideration." The next comment is from Virginia Gladwin, a San Gabriel resident. "Please continue the very important services of San Gabriel Valley Humane Society by renewing their contract with the city of San Gabriel. This wonderful shelter does an amazing job of caring for dogs, cats, and other animals until they can be adopted. The staff and volunteers are incredible. I have seen how patient they are in helping scared dogs and cats become loving animals ready to be adopted. They also provide services for immunizing animals and staying and neutering to keep our animal community healthy. Please continue to support SGVHS, a very important partner in our community." The next comment, I did not give a name. It says, "Please make a good decision and fund the animal shelter. SGVHS is a great value and serves our community well." The next comment is from Richard Valenzuela, Jr., MBA, and reads as follows. "Good evening, Mayor Manchaca and City Council. I have had the opportunity to listen to the entire City Council meeting of June 6, 2020. I was disgusted by the lack of respect, level of degrading, and bullying by both public commentators and city council members toward City Council Member John Harrington and Board President of the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society Cindy Rigney. The discussion that focused significant amount of time on the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society contract was unbelievable, especially since this $350,000 contract is approximately 0.8% of the general fund budget, not taking into account the anticipated $37,000 in dog licensing revenue offset received by the city. The city staff did an outstanding job in balancing the budget for 2020 to 2021, which included the full funding of the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society contract that was approved during the June 16, 2020, City Council General Meeting. I want to emphasize that in the city of San Gabriel Staff Report Summary, it was noted that estimates are conservative and assume no reduction in staffing or services for the coming year. In addition, the Staff Report Summary also noted that additions to this year's budget were kept per minimum and only what was necessary. For instance, in the third bullet point on page three, it states an increase of $86,000 or 32% to the animal control contract. Along with this necessary service, the Staff Report Summary on page four states, "As proposed, general fund shows a positive fund balance at the end of fiscal year 2020-21. My further review of the budget shows that the City Council Department budget itself increased 9% or $21,064 to $258,174 from the 2019 to 2020 budget, and 14% or $31,736 from estimated actual for 2019 to 2020 of $226,438. Why an increase in the City Council budget if funds are so tight during these difficult times? The city staff report summary and provided budget details show an overall conservative budget outcome with the animal control contract. Do you not recognize the excellent job that our own city staff has done to support necessary services, including the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society contract? I do not make demands, as some public commentators make last meetings. I only give my opinion, which is, approve the one-year contract with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. It is the best option for the city of San Gabriel and its residents and allows a continued positive city vendor relationship to service your constituents in the city of San Gabriel." The next comment is from former Mayor Julie Costanzo and reads as follows. "Dear City Council members, I encourage you as a decision-making body to approve a one-year agreement with the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. I have been a supporter of the SGVHS for many years and in many capacities. They have always been an asset to our community and many others surrounding us. I have witnessed firsthand some of the many challenges they face on a daily basis, and yet they are still able to maintain first-rate services and quality care. Under Cindy Rigney's leadership, they have come so far and continue to work on new programs for the future. It's evident by the fact staff has presented that they are and continue to be the best deal in town. We should be praising them for their efforts and diligence in providing us a much-needed service to our residents rather than questioning and punishing them. Please make the decision that continues to be the right one for our community as a whole, a one-year contract." The next comment is from Suzie Oghitara and reads as follows. "Hi, I just learned about the pending decision about the SGVHS. The thought of the not renewing the contract is unimaginable. They are well-organized, reasonable, and community-based organizations who are also nonprofits. San Gabriel needs it and you have enough people to support it. Please make the right judgment based on your elected position for the resident and community. If you are even remotely considering the Pasadena Humane Society, please don't. They do a better job with PR, but all the dealing I had with them is not for the animals but for their own sake. Please do not cancel the service with SGVHS." The next comment is from George Valdez and reads as follows. "Mayor Manchaca and City Council members, my understanding of the city negotiations with the SGV Humane Society is one where the city is trying to be fiscally responsible and continue to provide animal services for our city. The Humane Society, who is admittedly nonprofit, presents their case with incredible cost increases. Our city budget will be taking a big hit with the loss of projected tax revenue. We shouldn't get ourselves in money trouble by spending more money while receiving less tax revenue. Perhaps we can shuffle our great city employees to take on some of the responsibilities the SGVHS did for us at a much lower cost. It won't be easy, but $350,000 spent this fiscal year with unknown increases next year should be seen as a wake-up call. Let's do what we can in-house and outsource the rest. Vote to decline the offer from SGVHS as they appear to be too busy for us." The next comment is from Eleanor Liu of 240 North Presta Avenue. "Hello and happy June. Just heard San Gabriel Valley Humane Society has no contract? This is absurd. I hope the city realizes what an asset this facility is to our community." The next comment is from Tom Araho, a San Gabriel citizen. "Dear Ms. Clark, I am writing to urge you to approve a new contract for the SGVHS. Please do so for a full year and not just six months. My wife and I value the SGVHS as a vital part of our city. We take our dog there for vaccination. We have taken stray animals there in the past and it even helped us once with an injured bird that was in the street. Isn't that the kind of place we want to be, part of our city?" And the next comment is from Chastity Jennings Nunez and reads as follows. "To the SG City Council, in 2012, the SG City Council discussed discontinuing the services of the SGVHS. Azusa and Monterey Park had already ended their contracts in favor of the more fiscally responsible alternative of the LAC Department of Animal Control and Care. Steve Preston, SG City Manager at that time, said in an article, 'The costs they were proposing were not reasonable, not something we felt comfortable investing in, and we had concerns with the management. We were requesting a comprehensive audit so we could be comfortable that resources were being properly spent, but we have not been able to attain that.' The proposed budget in 2012, when these concerns were raised, was $167,000. Eight years later, the same concerns are still being discussed, except now we are talking about $350,000. With only a few phone calls and simple Google searches, I discovered that Alhambra Contract with the LAC Department of Animal Control and Care and their annual budget for animal control is $165,000. That includes licensing, animal sheltering, and a dedicated 24/7 animal control unit. I personally spoke with the police department in Monterey Park because animal services is under the PD budget. The officer gave me the exact dollar amount for their contract with LAC. Monterey Park receives licensing and shelter services as well as animal control service calls for $80,000 annually and just signed a new contract. They signed a five-year contract with a 3% increase each year. The city also received a credit..." The city also receives a credit on their invoice for the licensing fees collected. I don't understand who or how a quote of $450,000 was obtained from LA County for services when no other city in San Gabriel Valley is paying this amount for a contract. What services were requested? This is completely at odds with the budgets and contracts of surrounding cities. In a year where every dollar counts, where unemployment is the levels we have not seen since the Great Depression, where food and housing insecurity is a very real and growing problem for our community and others, and our public education in the fall is a giant question mark, why are we subsidizing a nonprofit to the tune of $350,000? There is no legal mandate for the city to contract with any animal control agency. On June 16, the City Council motioned and passed the auction for a six-month contract and allowed the 33% increase, agreeing to $175,000 for six months, already far more than surrounding cities. The SGVHS's board rejected the offer. There is no urgency to renew this contract tonight. This has nothing to do with whether anyone loves or appreciates animals. This has everything to do with our elected officials making informed decisions and being good stewards of our money. I strongly urge the City Council to allow the contract to expire and utilize at least the month of July to actually research other options, get a true and accurate quote from other agencies, and make a fiscally responsible decision. The next comment is from Joan Missouri of 8405 Woodlawn Street, and reads as follows. To whom it may concern, please continue the wonderful valuable services of SGVHS. My last three dogs have come from this shelter, and I know firsthand the caring, thorough, and important services this shelter provides. Please consider extending their contracts for a year at a time. The next comment is from Lorraine Mason. Please renew and extend this valuable contract. It is important to provide a caring environment for our animals here in San Gabriel. The next comment is from Sherry Cabot, a San Gabriel resident, and reads as follows. Mayor Manchaca, Vice Mayor Leow, and Council Members, I was upset and appalled listening to the San Gabriel Humane Society Board Chairman Cindy Rigney at the last City Council meeting. She was rude and condescending. To be honest, the society wasn't doing themselves any favors by sending her to request a huge increase in payment from the city. She was very offensive. Rigney didn't request an increase. She demanded it without any accountability on why they need such a huge increase or how it is to be used. She was not willing to negotiate at all, and she acted offended when council members asked her questions. If she is there to represent the Humane Society, she needs to be ready to answer questions without being condescending. It is the job of the City Council to ask questions, since they are the representatives of the citizens of San Gabriel and need to account for money spent. The San Gabriel Humane Society is asking to increase the money they get from the city from $264,000 to $350,000 a year. That seems like a rather large increase, especially when the City of Rosemead only spends $70,000 a year for their Humane Society, and Alhambra spends $160,453 a year. Both are larger cities and are paying considerably less than the $264,000 that San Gabriel is currently paying, and yet Rigney is asking for a huge increase of 33%. The city offered the Humane Society a six-month contract of $175,000, still more than either Rosemead or Alhambra's full year of service, and an offer was rejected by the Humane Society Board. Rigney said the only way they would accept a six-month lease is if they retained the $40,000 a year licensing fee collected for the city. They want to get paid for half a year of service and retain a year's worth of licensing fees? That's outrageous, and it sounds very much like extortion. At the very least, they should accept six months with half a year of licensing fees. You can do better, San Gabriel. It's time to cut ties with this current contractor, one that is gouging the city, and find someone more reasonable in cost and manner to deal with. The next comment is from Daisy Quan, and reads as follows. Hi Sally, or to whom it may concern, I'm a resident of the City of San Gabriel, been here since 2001. I've always loved and been proud of our city and all that it has to offer. I'm writing to you to support renewing contracts with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. They are a nonprofit animal service organization. They have done a superb job in taking care of animals for over 100 years. We are proud to have them be our local animal shelter to care for animals misplaced and looking for their new forever home. I personally have the good fortune of adopting my dog Dorothy from SGVHS. They took great care of Dorothy for over seven months, which is the length of time most animal shelters won't do. I continue to support them through my own donations, and I sincerely hope our city will continue with the contract with them as well, because it would be the most terrible loss if our city is to lose this best organization, which must not happen. Please renew the city's contract with SGVHS and continue our wonderful tradition of caring for everyone. Let me know if there's anything I can do to help you make the right decision. The next comment is from Claudette Leslie, an SG citizen, and reads, Dear Sally, we need our Humane Society. We have lived in San Gabriel for over 50 years and have gone for vaccinations to adopt pets and have counted on them to help out when finding injured and stray animals. It would be a sad thing to take the SGVHS away from our city. I strongly urge you to renew their contracts for a full year. The next comment, name was not given, and says, please set up a GoFundMe page so we can all donate to keep the shelter open. Please discuss at tonight's meeting. The next comment is from Cynthia Talavera. Cindy Talavera. Dear Sally, please convey to the City Council my sincere support for our city shelter. I know firsthand of the thousands of happy-ending stories that our shelter is responsible for and very proud that we are able to do it with little to no euthanasia due to lack of faith. I say "we" because I have been a part of the volunteer program for three years and have witnessed some incredible placements and rescues. Prior to my volunteer days, this shelter serviced my personal pets, dogs, and cats for as long as I've been alive, and that's a long time. Please ask that the council find a way to brainstorm with the shelter and come up with a plan that is comfortable for all and still serves our community well. I know there is a lot of support in the community. We just need to turn that verbal support into monetary support. I hope working together, we can save our shelter. And the next comment, name was not given, and it reads as follows. As a longtime donor to the SGVHS, I am totally perplexed as to why some members of the City Council have taken the position to renew the contract with the Humane Society for only six months. This is a terrible decision for the residents of San Gabriel and all the animals, too. It is a wonderful organization that deserves nothing but the highest praise and minimum of a five-year contract. For those council members who have made this very short-sighted suggestion, I would implore you to visit the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society at your earliest convenience to see what wonderful services the staff provides under the worst of conditions. Pasadena HS, on the other end of the spectrum, is flush with money from wealthy donors, and their new building is like visiting a Ritz-Carlton. Come on, folks. Let's make a decision to support the dedicated staff members at SGVHS so they can continue to provide the loving care that they provide to all of these poor animals. Thank you. And I'm sorry, that last comment was from Elizabeth Olson. The next comment is from Catherine Rice. And it reads, Dear City Council Members, please explain this foolishness. Why in the world would you be making changes to a successful arrangement with an organization that does so much for the community? Renew the contract with SGVHS as proposed. One year with a one-year extension with a 2% increase. Other cities pay a great deal more for poorly maintained, poorly managed facilities. This type of behavior makes the citizens of San Gabriel trust you even less, and this short-sighted thinking reeks of underhandedness. SGVHS benefits our community and our pets. And she signed as a San Gabriel resident. The next comment is from Tona Merlo, and reads as follows. Please Sally Clark, I am writing to you to please grant our shelter, San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, a contract renewal. We have to be the voices for our four-legged animals. They don't have anyone else but us. If they are picked up and sent to the police station, they may go to a high-kill shelter and not even given a chance to have a forever home where a family will love them and take care of them. Our shelter in San Gabriel has a high adoption rate. The shelter in San Gabriel has been around for many years, and people rely on this shelter to provide and love these little lost animals while they wait for a forever home where their family comes looking for them. Please help these animals have a chance at life. They did not ask to be born or thrown away, counting on you to do the right thing. The next comment is from Julia Kennedy. I am writing in support of continuing the contract with the San Gabriel Humane Society. Thank you. And the last comment this evening is from Estella Bold, and reads as follows. Animal control services are vital health and safety issues for everyone in San Gabriel, residents, businesses, and visitors. Using the table breakdown that was provided by our staff and doing a quick analysis of costs taking the last eight years of contracting with SGVHS, it is important to indicate that the cost increase in the last eight years, from 2012 to 2020, the average cost increase has been at 7.3%. If we include the requested new yearly contract for $350,000, the total average for the last nine years will be at a 9% increase. Taxpayers have enjoyed to date the good relationship and the low cost of a nonprofit. As a resident, the cost is important, as well as the convenience and good services that the SGVHS have provided for many years. Financially, it would make sense to enter into another yearly contract, given the fact that SGVHS have proven an excellent record of economic savings to taxpayers. It is commendable that a nonprofit has provided these savings even when other venues charge at a much higher rate. Please renew the yearly contract. And Madam Mayor, that concludes the comments this evening.
Thank you so much, Sharon. Okay, so at this time, we will begin with the council deliberations and discussions. The council member Harrington, did you want to start, since you said you had quite a few questions?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I would say I have a lot of just points, because this is, like I said a few weeks back, I thought we should have just left this authority to the city manager to negotiate this. I don't think we needed another meeting, but now that we're here, we might as well parse it out again. So our options are basically a one-year contract that we had, we've had for a while, a six-month contract that now doesn't include the fees coming back to the city, which is $40,000 revenue loss. Or we could decide not to do a contract at all, I guess, and leave the staff scrambling tomorrow to comply with the code, the state code, agriculture code, as well as the, I think there's three or four different codes, so. I don't, out of those three, I'm fully supporting a one-year contract, simply because I don't think it's feasible that six months from now, we're going to find $40,000 in savings from any of the options. I can go into a lot of detail. I don't know how much I should, but I pulled the 990 forms from Pasadena Humane Society. I pulled the 990 forms from San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. I can just tell you they're night and day, those 990 forms, because there's no board members, no executive payment to the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. They're all volunteers. If, I'm not going to name names, but if you go into the Pasadena, I mean, you have people making $300,000 in nonprofit. So you can see why their costs are more. They have a huge overhead. Their facilities cost a lot more. I mean, I can see why Pasadena Humane Society would be so expensive. I don't think we need to go into a lot of detail there, but it's just a more expensive option. I don't even think that's viable. So I'll focus a little bit on the county, because I think that would be the only realistic alternative to the Humane Society. So looking at what the county pays their animal control officers, I went through, they have 47 animal control officers making over $100,000 a year. That's not their managers, not the upper staff, not the people running the facilities. In fact, the director of the county makes $410,000 a year. The chief deputy director is $301,000. The general manager is $300,000. My point is, all of these people are making more than our contract with, our proposed contract with the Humane Society. And those are individuals. Those aren't people doing all these services. The county has a huge overhead. What they do, and I can tell you this, because I know the way the county operates pretty well, they go with volume. And all these people, so when I talk about service, I mean service to the animals as well, because I care about animals. I've adopted, I've adopted from San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, and I've adopted from other places. So the service to the animal is important as well. That hasn't been brought up a lot by the council. When that animal comes to San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, it's a short ride. They're in the truck, 20 minutes, 15 minutes. You know, it's, might be a little bumpier on our streets, but to get to Baldwin Park, or to get to Downey, or even Pasadena, is a, you know, it's stressful for those animals. So I think that we have to take that into consideration as well. So when I get into the actual breakdown, if you notice the county, the way they do their contracts, and I think this is something we could mirror with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, we've just never thought of it, is their billing is yearly in arrears. We could go monthly in arrears, just like the county does. That's something we could actually look into. That's something we could figure out before another contract. And then base it on actuals. So last month, we had X number of, of, you know, calls, and this is our cost. Now, there's two sides to that, because now what we're paying is actuals a year later, and it lets us budget per budget cycle, as long as we're on top of it, rather than having to, oh my goodness, we had a huge spike, and we're going over our budget this year. So there's two sides to that. There's planning and budgeting, and then there's, you know, revenues. So I'm assuming we'll probably have a lower cost next year based on this model. So, but that's to be determined. Now, as far as the costs and the history, I was here in 2012 when we went through this. In 2012, they had different management, and the reason we were asking for an audit then is because we heard some things that were very disturbing. None of these people on the board or the management are the same people. Let me just say that, so that the public understands that. Along those lines, when you look up their 990s, it shows you everything they spent their money on. I mean, I can do their audit in about 15 minutes. Pull their 990. Every single nonprofit has to do their taxes. It's basically their profit and loss statement. So you can see what they're spending their money on. The lion's share of the animals, of the cost goes to animal care directly. It's not going to anything else. Getting back to levels of service, and when I said the opportunity cost to go find your animal, that's a huge cost to me as a resident. If I have to drive to Baldwin Park, which I don't think we'd be able to, or Downey. Either one, I mean, Downey's what, like 20 miles? Baldwin Park's like 15 miles, 14 miles? Six in one hand, half a dozen in the other. Either going down the 710, or you're going down the 10. Neither of them is ideal, as opposed to going down Grand Avenue. So when we start getting into costs, and Mark, you can verify this, we can't really compare apples to apples with another city. It's based on calls. Our contract right now requires, there's two requirements of how much animal control service we get. So they are, right now, our contract requires of San Gabriel Valley Humane Society to be on call from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM six days a week. It requires them to be on call for staff, which includes the police or anyone else that calls them for a wild animal, 24/7. I don't know that we're going to be able to do that with part-time people. Let's say we did try to go in-house. I don't see that as feasible. And the reason I say that is, I did look at the average salary or average fees that that both nonprofits and public agencies pay. So I can tell you, like, let's just say we budget like Rosemead. Rosemead, if you look at their budget, so they may be farming it out, but if you read their budget statement, they base the value of animal control on one compliance officer. So for us, we could have a measurement of that, but I don't know that one compliance officer is going to be working 45 hours So for us, we could have a measurement of that, but I don't know that one compliance officer is going to be working 45 hours a week, six days, or that they're going to be working 24/7 on call in case the police call them. That would cost us a lot more money than we're budgeting. So the level of service has to be looked at as well. We basically have 24/7 on call and 45 hours that they have to respond to public calls. That isn't anywhere in the county agreement. You know, obviously, it's just a proposal. I'm sure if we gave those same levels, we'd get a higher quote on that. I mean, I just, the county's trying to get some business, so they kind of, we see all the asterisks on that quote. There's quite a few. And they didn't even quote our actual numbers. They, they put them down to what they think the calls will be. We can only go on our actuals. Now, we may be able to lower those calls. I think we could, and that's something we, it should be a goal of ours. So when we start, when I said this earlier, and I said, we're being penny wise and pound foolish, I really believe that. I don't know that we're going to pay less than San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, which I think their, their people are around $18 or $20 an hour. That's probably, we could, we might be able to find someone for that. I would put us more in the range of a normal, like, let me put it this way, City of LA, starting salary alone is $26 an hour for an animal control one, which is their entry level animal control. On top of that, they get benefits, medical and, and a pension, which obviously we wouldn't offer to temporary or part-time. But eventually, this is a full-time service. That's, that's a stopgap measure that might save us some money. But even, let's say we saved half of that $40,000. We're saving $20,000 at best. Let's say at best. I don't know that we're going to save $40,000 in this, so that's why I'm just saying, a year contract to me makes sense, and that gives us time that we can start right now. We can write an RFP. We can get as many people involved. We can have six different models. I don't know what changes six months from now. I don't know how the costs are going down. We, maybe we can do a little bit of savings here and there, but the bulk of the cost is in sheltering. And keep in mind, like I said, we're paid in arrears, so this is for last year's service based on numbers. Now, if we want to argue numbers, maybe we can audit the actual numbers. I'm sure we have records of, of all the animals because they're required to keep a record of every animal. So we could spend the time and audit their paperwork. I have no problem with that, and let's get it straight. But I, I for one am not for, right now, just saying, let's, let's abandon the contract. I mean, we had months before this meeting, months before June, knowing full well there's a cost increase. And then we wait till the last minute. I agree with Mark. We should never be put in this position. It shouldn't be an issue. We, we could have done something earlier, January, if everybody know, you know, COVID came along and we got busy doing other things, but we should be able to multitask. So to me, it is about service. So when it comes down to it, we're paying a fixed fee service for, for something that's in arrears. We're providing a service to the community. They don't have to drive to Downey. And, and that has to be taken into account because your decision tonight as a council member has to, you know, we're representing the people too, as well as the, the city in, in general, but also the, the, the stress of having to drive to Downey or to potentially Pasadena, which, like I said, I don't think that's realistic. So I really think that there is a solution that we could save some money in the long run, but I don't know that it's something that we waited this long, that it's going to be feasible, that in six months, that solution's going to present itself. Because keep in mind, we're, we're we're doing a six-month contract with a six-month renewal. And if we don't have this done in six months, we're out $40,000 that would otherwise come to the city under a one-year contract. So me as a fiduciary, I could never vote to gamble $40,000 worth of revenue with the fact that we may get a solution that saves us more than $40,000. I won't take that as a betting proposition because I don't see costs going down that significantly in six months when everyone else is saying costs are going up. And yes, some of these agencies have budgets that are different than ours, but I would tell you, there's a lot of hidden costs there. They don't, they don't line item everything that, that's involved, and even we don't. So I'm not saying we have everything covered because a lot of times our police officers have to take time to call, or our street maintenance will find a dead animal. They have to take time to call. That's all what I would call hidden costs, and that's going to be in every city. Some cities have more involvement in that, some have less. And, and I will just say that as a budget item, I, I don't want to pay this increase. No one wants to pay a 30% increase. But at the same time, it's an actual cost, and if we think the costs are incorrect, that's a different story. But I mean, I would, I would suggest everyone look at the 990s. They're pretty straightforward. They're out there. They're public. Anyone can find them. And, and that's the number one way to quote-unquote audit these places is to see what they're actually spending their money on. And when you're spending a huge amount of your money on, on executive salary, that tells a lot. So once again, I'll say our three options are a one-year, a six-year, or no contract. I think the, the six, I'm sorry, six-month. The six-month and the no-contract are just, I don't think are, the six-month is not ideal for fiduciary reasons to the, to the county, I mean, to the city. And then the no-contract, that's not even an option because tomorrow, who's doing animal control? Thank you.
Vice Mayor Liao.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we all love animals, you know, for the past 20 years, we always go to Humane Society helping out. We fix their dog's colonel, the rams would paint, all the cages. It's all come from the community. We all love animals. And especially at this time, you know, COVID-19, a lot of people have to go through quarantine 14 days with isolation without any companion. So I think animals did a great job. You know, people adopt those animals during the isolation time. So, you know, we know how important this humane society is. However, I think the cost is going up so high. And we'll just have to look at the, the reason, you know, why, why it has to increase for the past two years, 36% jump, and then this year, 33%. It's just try to figure out, you know, what's a sustainable solution to this problem. And, you know, we look at neighboring cities, Alhambros paying so much less. It's much larger city than San Gabriel, and another city is Rosemead, I guess, two years ago. Their cost is, I believe, $140,000. You know, Humane Society wants them to pay the $140,000, and they feel that it's way, way too much. And so they decided to do it in-house, and I guess they have an employee went through a training and paid $200, and so they become, he become the complying officer. So there's not a, a big jump for employee cost. And they subcontracted out to different venues, different services, I believe, total of five. And, you know, if there's a need for that service, then they charge. So they, they did, you know, propose $140,000 in an original budget, but at the end, it's only $70,000. So they, they save $70,000 for this animal cares. So we still, you know, want to consider what is the best solution, you know, even not just save money, of course, you know, we want to have good services. But give us six months, I think we can come up with something. Because Rosemead only took them maybe two months. Okay, so it's not a year to figure out what to do. And, and, you know, if, in the future, I think all the neighboring cities can form as JPIA, and we all can share costs. And, you know, I, I tried to call county myself. I tried to verify why county quotas so much money. And by the way, you know, if there's any dead animal or animal, for instance, coyote roaming around on San Gabriel Boulevard, you, you know, anybody can call county animal care and control because these animals roaming around, you know, next door from San Gabriel is county. So how I can tell, you know, yeah, these animals just, you know, stay in the city of San Gabriel. No, they, they just go everywhere. So I, I, I think county has responsibility to pick up those animals anyway, so. But no, we weren't, we're we want to continue with San Gabriel Valley Humane Society, but for six months only. And we can find a better solution for taking care of this problem. Another issue, I actually, I sort of thought about this. You know, I kind of worry, you know, because I love animals, and we all know this corrupt virus, okay? It came from animal, transmitted to people. Now, the people can transmit it to animal. So you heard all the cats that during the, you know, quarantine, they contracted viruses. So I worry, oh, what happened to these animals? You know, at the end, are they going to get sick? Are they going to die earlier or what? You know, and I read something about the rabbits too. And there's, I don't know how many, 20, 30 rabbits that died outside of Las Vegas. Yeah, so that's another concern I have, but, you know, hopefully these animals are safe, even though they have contracted the virus. I've heard they will not, they will not transmit back to people. Okay, so at least for pet owners, they're safe, but for animals themselves, I, I just hope and pray they'll be healthy. So, but anyway, that's, you know, we probably have to rely on a lot of veterinarian to take care of these issues later on. But right now, I think, you know, we'll stick with six months contract and, and see if we can follow other neighboring cities' model. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Pooh.
Thank you, Mayor. I think I tend to agree with Vice Mayor Liao. You know, it's not about whether or not we love animals, and I know many, many community members have gotten their, their pets from the San Gabriel Valley Humane Society. I think much was made about their adoption rate, and I was kind of curious, do we happen to know what that adoption rate is and how, how is that measured?
Councilman Poots, Mark Lazaretto. I don't have the full adoption rate number. I only have the number of animals that were adopted to San Gabriel residence and the number that were returned to San Gabriel owners. So I don't know how many were adopted by folks outside of the community. But of those, of those 909 animals, 87 were adopted by San Gabriel residents this past year, and 124 were returned to San Gabriel owners. And 282 were euthanized. So I would guess by those numbers that the remaining were adopted out. So 282 and 124 is, so almost about 300 were other methods and the other 600 apparently, but I don't have that in front of me.
Okay. Is there a standard amount of time that shelter must, are supposed to keep, you know, animals in shelter? Some, because some, some of the examples cited were, where an animal was there for seven months or something along those lines, which, I, you know, certainly if there's an animal that's injured or, or some sick or something, I think, I guess I'm curious as to whose responsibility it is then to bear that, that kind of a cost, because that, that sounds like it can get extremely expensive.
So the way that the county model works is you pay a flat fee and it basically five days worth of impound. And then if that is, covers the average amount of time. If there are extenuating circumstances, the county has the ability to send it to a private facility, and the city would have to pay for that. The way that Rosemead saves money is that they pay for the actual cost, and their actual cost is quite a bit lower than the county rate. So there's not an average, and their cost per day is more what you as a private citizen would pay to afford your animal if you were going on vacation or what have you, which is quite a bit less than the fully burdened rate that somebody else would pay. So all of that to say, there, there are two methods, and that's one of the ways that Rosemead was able to save money by keeping their sheltering costs quite a bit lower with more private rates rather than this fully burdened average rate.
Yeah, because I think, and even Councilmember Harrington mentioned it, it's about, one part about this, the way this contract is structured that is still troubling too, is that, you know, we're basing the fee upon last year or this, you know, current fiscal year's numbers, and then it's just set to continue to escalate from there. But if in the current fiscal year, there's a decrease in the numbers, we don't get an adjustment downward for that. So I do think that there's something to it here. I mean, it's about a true-up, you know, and, and basing the, our cost on what the actual costs are versus benchmarking it to perhaps a high year and then, you know, continuing to escalate from there. So, 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 so in my mind, you know, this is, I think that there does need to be some adjust, further adjustments perhaps. I mean, because it just doesn't make sense to sort of like benchmark to, to a potentially high year, or we, we just don't know what the experience is, is going to be in the future, whether or not that cost is going to be actual or not. I mean, and so that's why I think that somehow or another benchmarking it to actual costs would be a lot, you know, a lot fairer actually for, for both sides. You mentioned something too about when people take their pets to a kennel or something like that. So if, if people were to give up their pets, or let's say their cat or dog has a litter and they don't want to or can't take care of all the, all the pups or kittens, and they take them to the humane society, do they not have to pay for the sheltering and care of them themselves? Or is that something that the city is supposed to pay for them?
I will have to, to get back to council, that will be part of what we would talk about over that six-month period is how well that works. But I believe that right now, we are paying for that. And all of the animals that are surrendered in San Gabriel that came from San Gabriel, we end up paying for. And that's part of the reason why we have a number. In fact, I know that to be true because I heard an example of somebody who surrendered many, many cats that were in their neighborhood and were continuing to catch these cats and, and, and double-digit numbers of cats, and we are paying for those.
But are, I mean, are they stray cats? Or here's what I'm, I, I'm not understanding, because I think where there is an owner that's supposed to be responsible, then I don't understand why that would be the responsibility of the city to pay for litters or, you know, additional pets that are no longer, you know, able to be cared for. Strays is a different question, is a different thing, but because there's, there's nobody responsible. But where there's an owner who should be responsible for their own pets, shouldn't the cost be borne by, by those people?
I think in a perfect world, yes, but I think the way things generally work is they do not want to discourage folks from bringing these animals in because of the fact that some people might make a value decision of if I'm going to have to pay for it, then there will be a different way of dealing with this animal versus surrendering it at a shelter that where it gets adopted out. So I believe that that is the current practice, but we can drill down on that and come back with a, a more fully researched answer.
I see. I mean, I do like some of the ideas that people proffered about doing some private fundraising. I mean, if the, if the question, I mean, and here's another thing that we haven't been able to unpack, I think, fully within this short amount of time that we've had this, this discussion, which is the financial sustainability of the humane society itself, the costs that are incurred, and then I, and then to me, what is the sort of city's responsibility with respect to these costs? Because as I understand it, what we actually are required Because as I understand it, what we actually are required by the agriculture code and other state codes is simply to be able to provide um dog catching services. And it seems where now, I mean, that the lion's share of the cost, you know, sort of pun intended or not intended really, but the lion's share of the cost now is related to cats. And um, and even cats that uh, you know, potentially or could just be belonging to, that, that should be the responsibility of, of private citizens. So again, we don't have, I guess, you know, all the information to be able to sort of unpack all that and, but and, you know, perhaps it is the, is because of the, the onset of COVID nineteen that we weren't able to really, you know, um, do a deep dive and really figure this out uh in, in time before this uh, you know, the end of this contract, the expiration and also the end of the fiscal year. Because if it's a matter of the humane society's uh financial situation, then yeah, I, I, I totally agree with with the commenters that some private fundraising might very well be what, what's required here. But I don't think it should be that just two cities should have to sort of shoulder the burden to a disproportionate uh extent. Something, you know, something isn't right because cities that are much larger than we are, both in geography and in population, are paying much less for the same, you know, category of, of services. And I understand that, you know, uh, you know, maybe because the humane society is in San Gabriel, it's very convenient for us, the level of service is very high, so forth and so on. And yes, there's something to be said for that, but uh I guess the question is, you know, do we need the Maserati of animal uh control services? When, and most of it, I think, is in sheltering. Uh, I have to admit that I haven't been to the facility in, in many years. Can't remember the last time that I went though, you know, it could use some TLC. There's, I think there's no question about that. But uh, but uh if the, if it's a question of the financial uh sustainability of the society, then yeah, I, I have a hard time, I have, I guess, I don't feel that that is something that um needs to be subsidized by the city budget. I guess my feeling is really just that, you know, there's services that are required. And uh for us to be able to provide, we should pay for the actual cost of those services and, and that's it. Um, and the situation has become overly complicated with uh all these other factors. And I think that um, you know, it should just be like any other, any other contract that we have where there's a certain scope of services and we pay for those services uh that and based on actuals and not based upon a benchmark year that may or may not be the true for the next year or the year to come after that or the year to come after that. So I guess at the end of the day, um, uh, you know, I'm happy to discuss further. But uh I, I would support the six month, uh, six month contract just to ge- give us the opportunity to be able to figure out something better. Um, or what's, what's sort of, you know, what's really going on here, I suppose? I mean, um, the um you know, if we were to even continue after that with the humane society, I guess what I would suggest then is we absolutely just negotiate a true up. Or if it's just the, a monthly bill for the actual number of shelter days and actual number of animals that they shelter, that seems fair too. But uh, but just to have these skyrocket, skyrocketing costs and then have, not have it be reflected in what the actual cost may be in the future just doesn't make sense. I, to me, that's, that is extremely fiscally irresponsible. So um, so I guess that, that would be it. And if it's, you know, we come, come back six months uh later, then I think it's perhaps about restructuring the way that this uh maybe this contract is paid. Or if there's other options that uh essentially can provide the same service and for less, then, you know, I, that's kind of where the, the, this whole entire discussion began. Let's see, I, there was one other point I wanted to make, it's uh, it's escaping me now. I'm sorry, if I think about it, if I, if I remember what, what, what it is, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll come back to it. But, but yeah, I think bottom line is simply that um, that I think the six month um extension is a good option at this point in time. And that uh, you know, we need to uh continue to um look at other options. Or at least just tie this contract to actual costs. I mean, that seems, it's I think to me, that's just a, a very simple and, and, and sort of no nonsense uh way of looking at it. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Ding.
Thank you, Mayor. I have the, the little more question, okay. For the uh this uh human society services, so currently, how many city they, they have contracted? I mean, there's how many client they have? Just only our, your city?
Thank you, Councilmember Ding. Right now, they service the city of San Gabriel and the city of Temple City. Both of those are full service, so they provide animal control services and sheltering services for those two cities. And then for the city of Duarte, they provide sheltering services, but no animal control services.
Okay. So only right now, they, they, for minus they only like a two, a three city, they have a contract, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay, how many, I hear about it, they, uh, they are good fun, uh, like organization when I think it's a ninety years ago. Uh, I think it's Mrs. Fanny, it's a founder, this is uh human society. It's a, it's a, it's a good idea, it's a help our local service, right? And the, they uh try have the local help, like a lot of warranty people to help to working for them. Right, uh, I think last time, the CND say that they have this, hide the staff, they pay them minimum wage. But I just want asking, how many employee they have currently?
Uh, Mr. Ding, I will have to get back to you with the information.
No, no, I agree.
Yeah, I don't know what that is off of my head.
Okay. And, and uh based on, okay, under two thousand and sixteen, they looks like it's a, it's a hundred seventy seven thousand dollars. And after like almost just five years later, actually four years later, next to five, it's a three hundred fifty. Uh, looks like it's all like even, even way uh minimum wage or like uh inflation rate, it's not that kind of high. Like uh we mentioned, I saw that the last time, the, the, the table, total animal, I don't think too much more difference. Total animal they service, I think just like a nine hundred to one thousand. That's my, but I, I, I don't have on my hand, okay? But, but I, when I read it, so it's confused me, okay? But they mentioned uh because too many animal compare with like five years ago. Okay. So uh, I want to clear that, okay. First of all, okay, I want to, okay, I, I like animal, I, I also like to help our resident if something happened, their dog, cats go out. So we have this service and also I love them in, in the our city to provide service. It's really convenient for our resident too. But I, I, I want like uh, it's a reasonable and accountability to let our taxpayer know that and the transparency. Because the last year, last two years, they include next year, right? Even last year, it's already thirty six percent increase and next year, the thirty three percent. So uh so that's what we need to think about it, okay? It's a reasonable or not, okay? Another, then is a question, it's a, for the last three months, COVID nineteen, it is sheltered, it's still continue, oh, forty opened?
Uh, yes, their shelter was open, meaning that they had animals there that they were sheltering. And there were some coronavirus quarantine type of issues where they had to hold animals for a certain amount of time before they can adopt them out. But they were open to the public like on a daily basis, like any other business wouldn't have been. So there was under modified circumstances, but they were not closed. They were, they were open.
Yeah, okay, still like a hot, still have a lot of stray animal or lost dog on the, on the, on the our community?
No, over the last three months, it's been quite a bit lower than, than the year before.
Okay. So maybe for the next year, we, we should not base on the the, the previous, the, the data to assume, right? Should be based on our COVID nineteen. Like, like our budget, so we tried to like uh every month to review our budget. I think the same thing, it's a COVID nineteen, if we reopen it, so even reopen, maybe, maybe I, I based on current term, I, I don't think like uh the everything operation expense, it's the same to the previous one. So, yeah, so it's a reasonable if we want the like uh, you know, I listened to public comments. I, I know the, I hear that uh all the people, the, their opinion, they listen, okay, at the, they, they are, they are suggestion, okay? So, yeah, we would on good quality cut the animal control service too. But I just want that reasonable, I think if we reasonable, the pro- uh, the, the rate, it's a good transparency, let our resident know, it's give it to like a six months premiere uh, uh, time to do this some study. Okay, we can, if I, my mind is open, okay? If really after six months, the human society, they really the, the compare with some, another city like Rosemead or Hammera, it's there, have the good service, uh, they are lowest array. Maybe we still can continue, so that's why uh last time, we have the six months option for the another six months. I sounds like a really reasonable, doesn't meaning we want to get rid of the, 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 the human society, right? We, if they compare after six months late, later, we, we, we have a reasonable. So, yeah, we still can continue that. So right now, I think as I, I supported like uh the, the, like a recommendation, like a number one, it's just six months contract. Yeah. Thank you, Mayor, that, that's my comments, yeah.
Thank you. Okay.
Mayor, I'm, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I, I recalled what I wanted to, the, the other point, do you mind if I just?
Yeah, go ahead, before I start, yeah.
Yeah, sorry, sorry about that. Um, no, I, what I wanted to say is that, you know, the annualized license revenue is forty thousand per year. So over the six month period, I think we could only, we could expect that revenue loss to only be in the twenty thousand range. But then the other thing that I uh wanted to bring up was uh the actual numbers uh from this humane society themselves. Because in, in twenty fourteen, there was nine hundred and two calls for service, twenty fifteen, eight hundred and sixty three, twenty sixteen, nine seventeen, twenty seventeen, six hundred seventy four, twenty eighteen, nine hundred eighty eight, and then this last year, twenty nineteen, one thousand two hundred eighty three. And that's kind of, I, I think just to my point of uh, and also, you know, the number of euthanized animals uh varies greatly, you know, year to year as well. The uh, the, that, you know, the experience differs year to year, obviously. So um, I think it's, there's something not right about sort of pegging us uh to a high year in twenty nineteen and then just continuing to escalate from there. You know, it should just be like any other contract for service where, you know, whatever the actual cost and whatever the actual services provided, then we, we pay for that. And so uh, I just wanted to drive that point home with some of the actual numbers. And again, these are not necessarily verified because they're uh given to us at the last minute prior to, to the uh, to the last meeting. But uh, at the same time, even based on these numbers, there's a great variability from year to year uh in terms of how much service is required or how much sheltering and so forth. So I just wanted to make that point, thank you.
Councilman Pooh, I'm sorry, I have to correct one thing that you said at the beginning, just so the council has the, the uh information when they make their decision. The um, at, the revenue, although you're right, it would be uh spread out over the year. The lion's share that, using your pun, the lion's share that comes in at the beginning of the year. It's almost like our business license where the renewals all happen the same time every year and the renewals happen in July. So the vast majority of it all will come in, in July. And the rest of the year will just be what happens when people get a new dog and license it or any of the uh revenue that they have to collect from delinquent licenses. So I think council should understand that it's forty thousand dollars that we will lose out for that six minute month period.
Understood, thanks for the clarification.
Yeah, okay, the, yeah, sorry. With the license, I want, I, sorry, may I have a question too? So forty thousand dollars, yes, so we estimate annually license fee, right?
Correct.
But uh, for the, if the contract, we don't have like obligation, we have to pay additional forty thousand dollars. Just in case the license is less than that.
So the way that the licensing works is um, the humane society does all of the outreach and the collection of the licensing. So this year uh for these six months, whatever they collect, they will retain. Usually they collect it and then remit it to us after they've collected it. So, so they will keep all of that, we won't pay them that money, but they won't remit that to us.
But I, the, my question is, just in case the, this year, that maybe next, the, the COVID nineteen, maybe license fee, it's just only twenty thousand. That's it, right, this annually is twenty thousand, just twenty thousand, we don't need to pay additional. I just, just want to clear that uh our city don't have any like obligation, I'd say we have a tw- forty thousand, that's
You're right, I understand your question now, yes, you're right, that whatever they collect, they would keep. But we're not obligated to make up the difference if it doesn't make forty thousand dollars or, or some other number, you're correct.
Okay, thank you. But also the next question is a little bit argument, because there were contracts of six months. Uh, they keep all the one year license or just the ha- the six months license fee?
They would keep the whole year, but I'm going to do my best to negotiate if we have to do the second six months that we would get a discount for the forty thousand that they kept. And the reason that they are wanting to keep the forty thousand is because they do all of the work to do the licensing, they don't charge us for that. So all of the staff time involved in collecting all of the envelopes and mailing, all of the recording and the, the chasing after delinquent folks. So uh, they would normally not keep any of that money. So if we extend six months, I'm gonna try my darndest to work on, on getting a credit for that if we go for the full year.
Okay. And uh, okay, I said, right now, I just, I, I want to point out why I asking the, how many import E they have? If based on CND say just minimum wage, I roughly calculate if used our three hundred fifty thousand probably have like a eight to ten employee, full-time employee working for them. That's my, the, that's not just my question, it's I, I discussed some resident, they give me the, the, this kind of idea. So I don't know. Okay, is it, they are shelters that really need a eight to ten person in full time to working for them? Maybe, maybe true, maybe not, yeah, you know? So that's the, I, we want to clear for our rest of our resident their voice too, you know? Okay, yeah, that's the, my additional comments. Yeah, so that's why we need the six months to find out. Okay, yeah, that's the, my additional comments, yeah, so that's why we need the six months to find out, okay? Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, thank you, so on, on the licensing fee, um, Mark, I, I just wanted to clarify, that's just an estimate, so it could be less, it could be more. Um, it'll, you know, with COVID, people are finding it difficult, um, they, you know, people are losing their jobs, so. You know, licensing may not be a priority for some people, so it could be less, but we're just committed, well, they're, they'll keep whatever the actual is. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Good.
Mayor, I think the average, that was the, the average that I use for the licensing fee, based on what we typically have tracked. So you're absolutely right.
Average is, you mean the last three years, four years?
The last several years, that's typically what we, we've seen around forty thousand, that's an approximate number.
Okay, so you, you have some highs in those numbers, obviously, I think there were some years that were higher than others, yeah, okay. Um, well, I, first of all, I, I think it's important that, uh. It's clear to everyone, and we all care about pets, I mean, I have my share of pets, I'm not sure about other council members, I think Councilmember Harrington has a dog too. We, we all care about pets, whether we have them or not. But there are people who don't have pets also. And so as a council, we have to be mindful that we represent the full community. And I understand, you know, clearly back in twenty twelve when this decision was made, you know, they, there. Clearly was an onset, I remember that, of people who came out for the humane society. And I understand that, however, you know, we need to sit back and ask questions. And, and that is, you know, that's what our job is to do and represent everybody. And, um, I, I wanted just to ask a few things of the staff. Uh, regarding the private rates that are being used, for example, I, I think Roseme, we keep bringing up that. Uh, model, but maybe there are some other cities that do the same thing, so I think Monterey Park maybe. Uh. You know, we could, if, if we look forward, I mean, that would be an option, is some local vets. That could shelter, because that's a big part, I mean, I, I wouldn't want to go, you know, uh, to Downey or, or wherever that location is, uh, Baldwin Park. I mean, but, but. Roseme, at least it's one city that I'm aware of, they have local vets, so our, our, our residents wouldn't have to go far. They can go locally, even if it's Temple City, or even if it's in Alhambra, it would just have to be a vet. Is that correct? That has space and would be open to something like that?
Uh, correct, uh, Mayor Minchaka, if we looked at a model where we took this in-house, we would look to all sorts of service providers for the sheltering. And some of those could be local vets. But just to clarify with Roseme, they keep them at the local vet for a few days, and if it takes longer than that for an owner to come and claim the dog. Or for somebody to adopt the dog out, then that dog goes to a facility in La Puente. Which is, you know, several cities over from Roseme, I don't know what our version would be, so I can't promise that it would all be local. And that, uh, we'd have a solution that is as close as the humane society. But we would certainly bring all that information back to council, and then at that point, you'd have the, not only the financial, but the value decision to make as well, with all of that information.
Because even, well, even with Roseme's model, um, maybe there are two days, but we could devise something that maybe would be longer. Um, so, so there is some flexibility there that we can work through. Regarding the, um. You know, the, the benchmark to actual, I, I also agree with that process, I'm not sure how we ever. Agreed to in arrears, I don't think we have any contract like that, maybe there is another one, but, uh. You know, especially with COVID, you know, the last three months and poss, and probably the next three months, um, based on what the governor spoke about today. Um, you know, the, the numbers are going to be very low, and we are, we would be paying so much more if we have to go back. And so that would be one of the things I would like to see is something that's closer to actual. Um, a- again, you know, pets are wonderful, but it's not for everyone, and it is expensive to take care of a pet. Um, I know that personally, but that's a commitment I've made, I, I know many people can't. Um, so I, I do see a decline in, in people, um, owning pets. Um, as much as we, we encourage them to, but, but there's clearly a problem with our cat population, and I'm not sure how that. Got out of hand, or, or how come we haven't started the campaigns earlier? But we, it definitely, that's an area we would need to, to look at. Um, also, the number, the two hundred or three hundred, let's say, of cats, uh, of, I'm sorry, pets being euthanized. How, how does that work? Is that all because the owner, you know, the, the pet has some type of ailment? And the owner has asked to put the pet, pet down, or is that because? They've been there so long and no one's going to adopt him, I mean, that's a, a larger number than I expected.
Well, uh, please understand, I'm not. Um, defending or putting a value on, on the information I'm going to give you, I'm just going to present the information. But I believe a majority of that are cats that are feral. And a lot of shelters, if a cat is truly a feral cat, it can't be adopted out, and so those cats are euthanized. Um, and then there are cats that are, are, are highly aggressive, that are euthanized as well, and then dogs as well. But to give you a number for twenty nineteen, two hundred and twenty-three of those were cats and twenty-one were dogs. So the vast majority of those would have been either animals that were sick and had, um, health problems, uh, and other ailments that prevented them from either being. Um, rehabilitated or, um, um, adopted out, or they were completely feral cats, in which case they cannot be adopted out.
Okay, thank you for, I'm, again, the numbers are pretty staggering, that many cats. Um, I have two cats and, you know, they're fifteen years old, and they're living long lives, so. Um. I, I, I'm just finding it surprising, there's so many out there, um. Let's see, and then the model that we have, you know, again, back in twenty twelve. It seemed like all the cities just left, and only Temple City. Um, and ourselves, and Jordy to a certain extent, the shelter part. Um, kind of got left with, with, with the shelter. You know, they, it was abandoned, it seemed like, and I know that they tried many, many times to, um, raise money, I've been there. Um, and, and I just don't know why the fundraising, um, hasn't, hasn't. Hasn't come to fruition to, to the, to the levels I think that they need, but, but my question is. It concerns me when there's only two cities, you know, what if Temple City decides? That, you know, they, they want to pull out, then does that mean we would have to pick up their share also? Because I'm assuming, I don't, haven't looked at Temple Cities, but I'm assuming it's probably close to what we're paying, i- is, is that the case?
Temple City is paying less than us, they're paying in the high two hundreds. I think it's like two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, if I remember right, but I can get you a better number. But to answer your question, Temple City is watching, uh, our actions very closely for exactly the reason you just stated. That if we happen to drop out of the, uh, uh, humane society, then it becomes a, a, a different, um. Financial model, the humane society has said that they would look to try and attract other cities that are having problems with their. Uh, cost increases, um, and they would try and backfill if either one of our cities left. Um, but the short answer to your question is that it would become a difficult financial, um. Prospect for the humane society to continue in the same model.
Okay. Well, and, and Temple City, uh, Temple City and ourselves, we're about the same size, so, again. Why do, I mean, are, are we back to the cats, that we have more cats, we have more pets that, um, create us, I mean, we're paying now. Seventy, seventy thousand dollars more than Temple City, uh. Similar populations, similar size, you know, it, it just doesn't make sense, there, there's something, and that's why I think it's important to. Evaluate closely, because when you start making those comparisons, it, it just, um, it makes me very uncomfortable. And I think the oversight is, is important. Um, and clearly, we, we don't seem to have had it, because we have so many questions. Uh, and I, I think it's time to, um, to make kind of some of the harsh decisions, which is, you know, maybe this is not the model for us anymore. But we owe it to our residents, um, to, to give it the attention that it deserves. You know, it, it appears that since twenty twelve, that it's just been rolling year after year after year without any type of. Attention, uh, from the council. Um, it, it's just been kind of, we've accepted it, and, um, you know, we, we just haven't had that, uh. Uh, the, the questioning of, you know, why? And somehow we ended up being just two cities, um, for one humane society, and, uh. That, that's a concern, a great concern, and I know they try to raise money. Um, so, you know, that was a great suggestion, but it's been, that's something they've been doing for, for years, I mean, trying to raise money. And so I, I, again, you know, I, I don't understand why. Um, if, if it's so important, whether it's Temple City or St. Gabriel, you know, why haven't, um, the residents, um, invested in our humane society? I know the volunteers do the best they can, but you still need money, you need, um, uh, you know, funding of some sort, and it hasn't been there. Uh. So I, at this point, I, I think there's just so many questions, and, um, I think it's important to continue the conversation. And, uh, I would also propose the six months, uh. With the license fees, whatever that number happens to be, and hopefully, um, you know, we, we can. Find some type of common ground, we can work through it, meanwhile, uh, we'll see how other cities. Um, if they step up to the plate, or if there's going to be a different model, because it sounds like, Mark, that. All cities are looking for a different model now. And, and I, and I'm not sure why, even the humane society, I mean, can't consider, um, you know, and maybe they are, but. I haven't heard that tonight, um, but I, I think this is, this is the time to really. Um, spend, spend the time, um, do our due diligence. And, um, you know, so, so that's, that's, that's what I have at this time, I'll call for the questions, since we've discussed this a lot already.
I have a couple of questions, Mayor, that came up.
Okay. Um, well, let, let's just, um, I'm calling for the question, and then we can have, uh, discussion before we take the vote.
So, I'm sorry, Mayor, then is that, is that a motion?
Yeah, I'll make the motion.
For the six month?
Yeah.
Okay, uh, I'll, I'll second.
Okay, um, any further discussion, Councilmember Harrington?
Yeah, so one, I, I've had a couple of comments that came up, that I had questions for Mark, um. Uh, Councilmember Lau, Vice Mayor Lau said that the county will pick up animals inside of St. Gabriel, is that true or not? Like, he said anybody could call the county, they would pick up animals. Because why are we paying for animal control?
Yeah, I'm, I don't know, Councilman Harrington, I would have to call the county and research that.
Because my understanding is they will not do it inside of someone else's jurisdiction without a contract. So I just would like to verify that, because that's a very important thing, if they will, then why are we, why are we paying at all? Why don't you let the county do it?
Uh, Madam Mayor, uh, can I answer the question?
Sure, Councilmember Harrington, we'll give Vice Mayor a chance to answer, did you make the phone call, um, Vice Mayor, or?
I did, I did, you know, however, uh, Bethany didn't return my call, and that was my question, and the second question was asking her. What is the actual, uh, you know, cost to the city of St. Gabriel who want to sign a contract with the county, but anyway. You know, I don't like a mission. Running around on St. Gabriel Boulevard, and next door is county. And we have that many, many areas that, you know, county is just right next to us, you can just say, well, yeah, this is. This animal is stick to the city of St. Gabriel's jurisdiction. Okay, they running around, and, you know, and I guarantee you, you, you call them, they'll pick them up.
Well, i- it's, it's another good question to add to the list, um, just for confirmation. Okay, you have the floor, Councilmember Harrington?
Thank you, so my point is inside our jurisdiction, it's our responsibility under the code. Um, so the next question is, um. It was mentioned that, um, the, the number of days per sheltering, I believe the requirement under the Control Act is, um, five days. Is, and that's how much we pay for. Now, what, what the value of that, or what the cost of that is something we should be diligent about. Um, but keep in mind that we're not only paying for like the nightly, as if you're dropping off a pet for a vacation, they do have to do a health screening. They do a vaccination if it's a found pet. Um, so it's not the same as just dropping your pet off like at Petco or wherever else you want to board your pet. Um, and there's also the pickup, you, you're dropping off yourself, you're not paying someone else to come pick it up. We, that, once again, that's not an apples to apples cost, I'm going to keep that in mind, you have to pay somebody to go pick up animals. And the city picks it up because it's a stray or it's wild or whatever it is. And then, um. As far as the comment regarding not everyone's a pet owner, this is not regarding pet ownership, this is regarding the city's responsibility for strays and wild animals, it has nothing to do. With someone's actual pet, because if the pet is picked up, then the, then the owner pays for that. I, I know, because my dog has been loose once, and I paid the entire fee, the city doesn't pay for that. So we're only seeing the numbers of the ones where the pet owner doesn't reclaim it, because the pet owner gets billed for that. So, and it's like the same as like people that never had kids, but we all pay for education because it's something we all need, that's the same idea here, we all pay for animal control, even though a lot of us don't have that, there's some of us have pets. Everyone is affected by loose animals, potentially. And then I wanted to get clarification from Mark regarding the VCA, my understanding is the Roseme was having issues with them, I called over there. And they're probably going to be changing their model, that's my understanding, could be wrong, maybe you've had more conversations with them, but because the, um. I, I would like to get input onto whether the shelter in twenty would even take the number of animals we have, I mean, is that even viable? Do you know their capacity, I mean, how much have you gone into that with them?
Uh, I don't know any of that information yet, we are, uh, we started to make those calls to local vets. St. Gabriel doesn't have the same number of vets as other cities do, or, or hospitals, pet hospitals, so. We have not got that information yet, but to your point about, um, uh, Roseme, my conversations with them have been that they view this as a temporary model. And they are on the conversations with the other cities in the area for a longer-term model, they were told. They were told that, that, uh, Vida may be going out of business at some point this year, and so that was a long-term solution.
Okay, so then, um, I think my last, I'm, I'm just going to make that comment one more time, and I, and this is more of a question to Mark. What are the odds of saving that forty thousand dollars if we only go to a six-month contract, I mean? Let's just say we can't find a solution that's forty thousand dollars cheaper, or a hundred and thirty thousand for six months. Um, isn't that kind of just money down the drain at that point? It's just, it could be, could be rhetorical, it could be a question, I don't think that's a, a good fiduciary responsibility with other people's money, taxpayer money.
Well, I'll talk to Cindy as soon as I get off of, uh, this caller, first thing in tomorrow morning. And talk to her about if we extend that six months, whether we could, uh, uh, work on that. And the, the, because all of the conversations with me, her concern was about doing all of that work upfront and not having a year's worth of contract. So, uh, I'll talk to her about that, as far as what we could save, um, I think if, if the. If the, um, St. Gabriel Humane Society turns out to be the least expensive solution, then we won't be saving anything. The only reason we would be looking to go somewhere else is if we were able to save some money and, uh, provide better service to the community, so. I, I don't know, I can't give you a, an answer as to what the chances are that we'll save that forty thousand dollars.
Thank you.
I just wanted to clarify, uh, Councilmember Harrington, when I said we're not all pet owner, or some people are not pet owners, I think this is a very emotional topic. And people who do have pets or have a passion for pets look at this very differently from those who don't. And so that's my, my, um, my comment, whether, you know, you mentioned children or whatever the case may be, we, we always have to be. We, we have to be conscientious of the fact that there is a group or a population who may not find this to be as valuable. As those who do have pets or who have a passion for animals, that was my comment.
That would be every budget item, in my opinion, but yeah.
Okay, well.
There's always somebody that wants that budget, or somebody that doesn't.
Well, there's always two camps, I mean, it's, this is.
Or three or four or five.
Well, yeah, two, three, four, but there's definitely two camps right now, um, you know, and one just happens to be. Uh, more vocal, um, at least during public comment, uh, but, um, you know, there is another camp that, um. Would like maybe to see these money spent in different ways, or just wants us to, um, do a careful review. That's what I'm saying. do a careful review. That's what I'm saying. Okay?
And Mayor.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Poo?
Yeah, if I might, I mean, I think that actually that discussion also goes, you know, towards some of some of the, all these questions that are still surrounding it, because it does seem that a lot of community members do go to the Humane Society for service for their private, you know, their own pets. But as Councilmember Harrington said, my idea, my, what the responsibility of the city is to have animal control for feral and and stray stray animals. So this is where, you know, I feel like there is a lot of confusion about the about the issues, and what what is it that we were exactly, you know, supposed to be contracting for? And then, and then, you know, what is the cost of those actual services? I think I would also say that I I don't see any reason why this needs to be a single source contract. Like, there's no, I don't think there's any need for it to be only one shelter that we would go to for animal control or animal sheltering services for strays and and feral animals, for example. So I could imagine a network of various places, and frankly, the competition, I think, would be you know, do well for in terms of cost control. And if there was a network of various places that where some of those animals could be placed, then I, you know, then they would all compete for, you know, providing the best service and lowest costs. And then for private pet owners who need vaccines or other services, you know, I think that it should be the responsibility of those private citizens to pay for those services. So so in a way, I feel like it's taken all this discussion to kind of get down to this point of what is it that's actually the city's responsibility? And then, of course, it shouldn't be any, like any, it should just be like any other contract where there are certain services provided, whatever the cost of those services are, you know, we pay for. But not benchmarked to a particularly high year in terms of numbers of cats, for example. And then escalated from there. That really doesn't make sense, in my opinion. So, and maybe you're right, because, you know, I once upon a time owned pets, but I I don't now, and perhaps that's part of the reason why I don't view it in the same way, perhaps, but but at the same time, I guess, you know, I I do understand and appreciate that people love their pets, and that, you know, these are companions, they're members of the family. You know, you want to see them taken care of. But I don't think that that's what this contract is talking about, that the the wildlife controls, animal control stuff is for strays and I've always thought of it as being for strays and feral animals. And so that's where, again, you know, I I feel like we we need to separate that out in our in our thinking as well, and then also not be so stuck on just a single source. Frankly, if there was a network of of shelters that could be developed, you know, the St. Gabriel Valley Humane Society could very well be one of them, and, you know, maybe would be sort of like maybe even the preferred provider, but don't necessarily see why it has to be the exclusive provider. Thank you for allowing me for those additional comments.
Sure. I I was just going to to say that, you know, we are not the only city that is looking at this closely. I mean, every city is evaluating the contract and seeing if there's a better way. And Mark has shared with us, and I think it's common knowledge, that that there is a a desire to have options. And so I think we're doing what we should be doing, which is being responsible and keeping an open mind of the possibilities. So so I thank everyone for, I think, I think we've had a good discussion. I think staff, you have your list of questions for the next six months, and, you know, we, I'm sure we're going to have more more discussion. But at this time, Assistant City Clerk Bonus, can you please take the vote?
Councilmember Ding?
Hi.
Your vote?
Yeah, okay. Yes, okay. For the, for the, for the six months, right? Yeah.
Yeah. Is that a yes, Councilmember Ding?
Yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Harrington?
No.
Councilmember Poo?
Hi.
Vice Mayor Liao?
Hi.
Mayor Minchaca?
Hi.
Motion passes by a vote of four one.
Thank you so much. The next regular city council meeting will be held on Tuesday, July seventh, twenty twenty, at six thirty PM. Thank you, everyone, for your time and attention to this. Meeting adjourned.